Okay, I'd like to call to order the Board of Trustees' regular meeting for September 12, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Please stand or run for the...
September 16.
So, I'm sorry, September 16th for the pledge allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Supervisor file.
Here.
Clerk Newbeck here, Treasure Brown.
Here.
Trustee Hayward.
Here.
Trustee Morocco.
Here.
Trustee Nalamothu.
Here.
And trustee Tetter.
Here. Okay, great. Can I get approval for the agendas presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the agendas presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great, okay. We're gonna go through, and does the board have any announcements? Going down. Terry?
I'd just like to know if we could have a moment of silence for Charlie Kirk.
Okay. Sorry, no?
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Anybody else down there? I have one. You know, I can't say it better than it was delivered to me, so I'm gonna read an email that I received. I wanted to share some good news we got over the weekend. Independence Television won 10 awards in the Philo Festival for Media Arts Competition. With over 130 entries spanning across Indiana, Michigan, Ohio, and Kentucky, our staff won awards for the following video productions. They won Community Advance General, Professional Winner, Clarkston Garden Walk 2024, Ben Kowalski. They won Entertainment Finalist, The Great Lakes, Keep Their Dead, Michigan Moments, Matt Legato and Michael Rosenkrantz. Also, they won Political Awareness by Professional Writer, Independence Township, The Clerk's Office, John Elke. Promotion Video, Promotional Video, Three Minutes or Less, Professional Writer, winner, sorry, winner, Experiencing Everything in Independence Township, John Elke. Promotional Video, Three Minutes and One Second or More, Professional Winner, Chiwasi River Restoration Project, Matt Legato. Promotional Video, Three Minutes and One Second or More, Finalist, the Community Impact Team, Matt Legato. Public Service Announcement, Professional Winner, Early Voting PSA, John Elke. Sports Coverage, Student Winner, Eisenhower versus Clarkston Football, Matt LeBeau. Sorry, Matt, if I pronounce that wrong. Matt Legato, John Elke, Ryan Elke, Miklo, Rosario, Sam West, Zephyr Heaton, Jenna Holcomb, and Cam Stanley, Sports Entertainment Talk Finalist, Remembering Dan Fife, Michael Rosenkrantz, and Matt Legato, and Best in Show, Independence Township, The Fire Department, John Elke. This is the most awards the Independent Township has won in a single year participating in this contest, and they are going to be moved, going to Ohio next month to receive their awards. So, congratulations ITV.
Awesome.
Thanks. Okay. Any other public announcements? No, anyone in the audience have a public announcement? Nope, okay. We're gonna do public comments. We'll go to the audience first. You have five minutes. I'll let you know when four minutes is up, so you can kind of wrap it up, make sure you get your point across, and then we'll bring it back up to the board. And this is again for anything that is not on the agenda for tonight. So if you have any public comments, you would like to come up to the podium, please state your name and your address. Anyone in the audience? Nope, okay. I'll move to online. Does anybody online have any? Nope, yep. So, John?
Hey Chuck. Yeah, John Doolin. 7421 South Village Drive. And I just wanna say, I was able to join via YouTube for the special session last Monday. I want to thank you guys for doing that. As a citizen, my, I didn't know what to expect, and sometimes it seemed like neither did either party that was in the room. What I was hoping for is some type of productive dialogue to a resolution, and it felt like it was each side stating their case, standing their ground. I will say personally, I lean toward Terry's point of view, and I support that perspective as a property owner. I just want to thank the group for coming together and doing it, and just hope that we can put that issue to rest. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else online? No, okay. Anybody on the board? No, okay. So at 6:05, I'll close public comments. Public hearing, we don't have any presentation reports. There aren't any carryover postponed agenda items. There aren't any consent agenda. Request to approve the Board of Trustees' regular meeting minutes of September 2nd, 2025, and special meeting minutes of September 8th, 2025. Also, request to approve the September 9th, 2025 check run, including ACH for $287,326.59. Ratify the August 29th, 2005 payroll of $363,702.49 in the July 2025 EFT ACH wire activity of $770,040.51. Request to approve out-of-state travel for Independence Television, Station Manager John Elke and the Station Manager. Request to adopt Resolution 2025-029 to participate in the Opium Settlement from Purdue Pharma LP and Shackler Family Settlement. Request to adopt Resolution Number 2025-030 to participate in the Opium Settlements, Avilgen, and Neil, Apox, this is all just testing me here today, Potex, Hykman Ma, Indivir, Mylan Sun, Zitis. Thank you very much for that. Can I please get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Item removed, consent agenda, there aren't any regular business. Okay, so request to approve from DPW, their Underground Storage Tank Demolition Service. This is brought by the DP Director, David McKee.
Evening, everyone. So just a quick refresher, so most of you recall approximately about a year, year and a half ago, we had an issue with our underground storage tanks at DPW, our fueling tanks there. We had a leak detection in one of them. Thank God that, they're double-wall steel tanks. We had an alarm that one of the inner tanks had failed on one of the tanks. So we took the proactive move, and we used some ARFA money that we had there to build a new fueling station. So, that's online. Everything is working great for that. It looks really nice. So the final piece to the project here is to get rid of those old tanks and pull them out of the ground, and just have them disposed of properly and restore the site. So we did go out for bid on this, and we went out for bid to have this demolition done. We received five bids that came in, and the low bid was from Oscar W. Larson for $87,333.75. So I'm here tonight to get approval from the board to award that contract for the demolition services for the old tanks, to remove all the old equipment, and to restore the site for Oscar W. Larson.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board? No? Any questions or comments from the audience? Any questions or comments online? Okay, can I get a motion then for it, please?
I'll make a motion to accept and approve the competitively bid proposal received from Oscar W. Larson DBA Owl Services of Clarkston, Michigan for professional services associated with the DPW Underground Storage Tank Demolition Services as outlined, in an amount not to exceed $87,333.75, and to direct the supervisor to sign the contracts as the authorized representative of the township.
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great, motion carried. The next item on the regular business is for the request to approve Deer Valley Number Two Pump and Motor Overhaul from Peerless Midwest. Again, Director McKee.
So, just a little background on this. Also, you know, we've been very proactive over the past 10 years or so to make sure that our water production wells are running at top efficiency. Every year, we have them tested for efficiency, and we make sure that the motor's working good, the drawdown is good on the well, and the well pump itself is working at optimum performance. In this case here, we have Deer Valley. We're gonna try to put Deer Valley Pump Number Two. There's two pumps there. The report that we did receive for this year's pumpage, or pump test that we had, indicated that it's time to do some maintenance on it. It's kind of one of those preventative maintenance things. We've been very proactive on there. In your board packet, you have the list of all the pumps that we have tested, which is all of them. If you go through there, you can see most. The vast majority has known action needed. That's because we've been proactive over the years. This summer has been very hot, and we've been pumping a lot of water, lots of it. So we wanted to get this done in the fall, when things calm down a little bit and our demand lowers. So we want to stay ahead of the curve on this and maintain our schedule for our water asset management plan to keep our pumps running in great shape. So we're in good shape for next year. So, this, like I said, this is the repair of Deer Valley. There will not be a budget amendment needed, but there'll be, I wanted to get a budget adjustment approval too. We're gonna move some money from one account to another to cover this repair. So there's no increase to the budget whatsoever.
Okay, any questions, comments from the board? Questions or comments in the audience? Questions or comments online? Okay, question comments closed. Can I get a motion then, please?
Move to approve the water budgeted, budget adjustment as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried.
I'm gonna move to accept the proposal based on the Oakland County pricing received from Peerless Midwest of Michawaca, Indiana, for professional services associated with the repair of Deer Valley Well and Pump Number Two, in the amount not to exceed $48,700, and direct the supervisor to sign the proposal as the authorized representative of the township.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, number three. Request to approve reorganization of the Planning, Zoning, Building, and Code Enforcement Department. I am coming to the board tonight to ask them to consolidate the department that was split back in, I think it was 20 or 19, and put it back together again in the packet. You saw the reorganization of it, and we're gonna be putting everything under the Dave Moran's leadership, and then it's all to do, just to make things a little bit more efficiency. Plannings are coming down, the number of them. We're looking at some cost effectiveness on this, and a better line of communication and efficiency. So, any questions or comments from the board? You pointed at your screen, so I'm not sure.
I don't have, I got, I got nothing. The only thing on my computer that won't. I got no packet, no. I do have this one, and then it goes blank.
You have it.
I can't get it, I can't scroll, I can't get anything. I just find some questions, like when, what's the procedure? You know, what's, how's the transition gonna work? When's it gonna take effect? What, how's that all gonna, you know, happen?
So...
Kind of logistically questions, you know?
So there was a lot of questions there, so let me go through it kind of slow. Officially, it would be, the restructuring reorganization will be starting 1-1 of 2026, in part because of the fact that budgets, we're going through the budgets right now. There's three reasons why. One is the budget has already been set for the 2025, and to redo it for the alignment doesn't make a lot of sense to do that, especially given the fact that we're putting together the budget for 2026 right now. Second of all, this is not a small lift. There's a lot that's gonna be going on to go and move this over. It's not like you can just suddenly hand somebody a file and say, "It's yours, go." So we want to make sure we do it, we do it right. We're coming into the fourth quarter. There's a lot of holidays and time off and all that. So we just want to make sure that's all taken care of. We also have had some additional things going on in the building department with Moran and working with the village. You know, we've been working out some of the things there, so that's taking up a bit of his time. He's also looking at bringing another ordinance forward, and figuring out how to staff up from that on the building side of things. So, again, things are going on, and we just want to make sure we do it slowly and do it right. Unofficially, it'll, we're gonna start making that transition now. So, we are meeting with Carlisle Warman next week. If you approve this, going through the concept of doing this, and talk about the nitty-gritty of the actual handoff and everything else. As it stands right now, Megan is going to be our contact person there. So she will be, Warman, Carlisle Warman used to be our planning, and they've done it in the past, so they have experience with the township. You know, you'll talk to Dick Carlisle, and he'll say that we were his first customers, and he's been here longer than any of us, I think. At least he told me he saw the first tree grow in Independence Township, so. So, we're gonna have that go through, you know, starting officially right away. We're gonna have Megan really kind of be the point person going forward from here. Again, if the board approves, Megan will be the point person going forward, and she'll be the official, public-facing, if you will, of the planning department. And she'll be working with Brian, and Brian will be handling the handoffs and all that. So that's the direction of how it's gonna go. The nitty-gritty details, that's gonna come next week when we get with Dick Carlisle and his group. Any other questions?
Only that we get an update after that.
Yeah.
So we have a better understanding, once we have an agreement with Carlisle Warman, so we all understand who's doing what, and when it's all going down, is all I would ask.
Yeah, and actually, just in point, I did ask Sam today to attend that meeting next week, so that he can be there firsthand to make sure that, you know, everything's being looked at and everything's being understood, and how that's gonna move forward. So hopefully he can make it. Any other questions from the board? No, okay. Any questions from the audience? Comments? Okay, please come up.
This is Anne Mancorum at 6621 Pear in Clarkston. My question is more out of ignorance of how it was established before. This is moving under a different, it's an outside organization, the planning and zoning? Is that correct?
Technically, we're not supposed to be engaging in dialogue, so let me think about this. Right, so, and it's hard not to set a precedent and engage. So there's some challenging there. Last of the board's permission, can I answer the question?
I would prefer you do.
Yes.
Personally.
Okay, all right. So, in the past, it was done in-house by Brian Ottman. He was the director of planning. Prior to that, back in 21, it, there was, Brian actually came from Carlisle Warman. He was our outside planning consultant and brought in-house. Eventually got, there's a lot of, I wasn't here, so there were some mixed stories about why it got divided up. Whatever that is, or whatever made sense then, I just worked from the premise that the board approved it, so it made sense at that time to separate the two. Today, I think it just makes more sense to bring them back together again, based on the current things that we're living through today.
Okay, thanks. So the board, I was here last week, and so the Planning Commission that was here is not working for the Board of Trustees? It'll move to work for someone else, or did I misunderstand?
That's, I misunderstood. So, the Planning Commission is an elected group, appointed group, right? That is kind of like an independent of the board, but their job is to go out and look and see what things need to be done, and so on and so forth, and bring recommendations back to the board. That aspect of things has not changed at all. The only thing that's gonna change is who's gonna really kind of be more the front person for the township in dealing with the planning-related issues. So if somebody comes in and wants to build a new building, a subdivision, whatever, they have to come here, they have to bring in documents and all these things, and there's a whole process that they go through, is really dealing with that internal part of the process. Because building and planning work so tightly, you know, it just doesn't make sense to have them separate. There's, you know, duplicate of, or overlapping tasks that are being performed just from an efficiency standpoint. It just makes sense to bring it back and have one person kind of look at it. And, again, with the development, projected development, and those types of things, it almost doesn't warrant a full-time position anymore. There's not that much opportunity for that type of development.
Okay, thanks for explaining.
For violating my own rule? Yeah.
Well, sometimes you gotta explain.
Any other questions from, yes, please? Well, we'll start on this side, then we'll eventually get over. Okay.
Ray Llewellyn, 9254 Pineup Road. So that at least I, and maybe somebody else too, can better understand this. You're merging the two departments?
Mm-hmm.
And is there gonna be, you know, and I know that Chuck, you've talked about, you know, trying to bring, I want to say, the labor costs down. Is there going to be staff reductions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on this side? On this side?
Alan Auger, 5400 White Lake Road, Clarkston. I just want to say, I'm coming up on 20 years on the ZBA. We're a judicial board. Usually you don't see me. I don't get into your politics because we're a judicial board. Planning Commission's different. They've come to you. They, this line stops with us, okay? With being on the board for as many years as I have, we've went through a lot of building officials. I have been a building inspector here at the township myself. I've been out in Springfield Township on their border review and stuff. What packets that we get are complete today under Brian Ottman, okay? Back when he was with Carlisle Warman, our package weren't this good. Didn't have the time to put into the satellite views, going back and pulling old ZBA cases from the neighborhood, so we have reference of what goes on. I'm the historian on the ZBA board now, because I came here in the township in '54, when this was a gravel pit, and there was a cement company here back then. So I kind of remember a lot about the area. Lived in the corner of Snow Apple and Walden through college, so. The thing I was trying to say is, you know, when you outsource stuff, it's like having rental property. Renters do not put anything into your township. City of Pontiac, I was building official there. When it went to a rental city, it all went downhill. Everything was outsourced. You saw what happened to the town. When you do that here, I'm afraid the same thing's gonna happen, and we won't get complete packages. We might see more Circuit Court cases, which will be to the attorney's advantage, but we try to handle it. When the Planning Commission, before they make a reference to you, they'll tell the people, "Well, you can't do that because it's against the zoning ordinance. You gotta go to ZBA." Well, then we sit up here for a half hour, 45 minutes, and try to negotiate with the petitioner on how to get it down, because they don't want to go to Circuit Court. When I built the office building up on Dixie, every time the Planning Commission put us off, it was $10,000. That adds up quick. It costs everybody money, so. Just think about what you're doing and what your employees are. You know, until you walk a mile in somebody's footsteps, you don't know what Brian does. So, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience? No? Okay, anybody online? No? Okay, then I'll close public comments, and I guess I'm looking for a motion to consolidate the two departments.
Yeah, I'll move to approve the recombination of the Planning and Zoning Department and the Building Department into one, consolidated Planning and Building Department effective January 1st, 2026, and authorize the Township Human Resources Manager to establish the Planning and Building Director Position, update the Planning and Zoning Manager and Building Official Job Descriptions to reflect revised reporting structure and adjust organizational chart accordingly.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. The next item on the agenda is the request to appoint board and committee members for the Walters Lake and Lake Oakland Improvement Board Liaison. This is, we're looking to do, is kind of do things, I need to amend this, to include another trustee onto, or an elected official onto the board. The lake board right now, Paul sits on the one, the Walters Lake, and he lives on Walters Lake, and he came to me and said that he thought it may look bad, optics look bad, if something were to go along financially, and it looks like he personally gained from it. So he said he asked me to remove him from it. I am switching Terry and Paul, they both serve on lake boards. The other thing, so that's what that was started at. The other thing is, is that because Walters Lake exists 100% within the township, there is, based on Act 451 of 1994, Section 324.30903, that their lake board will have two representatives of the local government. Every other lake board we have straddles another municipality, so we have one trustee on there, and the other municipality has a trustee on there for the two. For some reason, this has been overlooked over the years, and so we're just trying to get that corrected. And so therefore, I'm gonna amend this to include Clerk Newback for the second local government official on the Walters Lake. So, any questions from the board?
Just a comment.
Okay, comment, go ahead.
I just want to thank the clerk. We were getting ready to appoint another person to the Walters Lake Board who is moving and wasn't going to be on the lake anymore. And I went to the clerk to figure out which position are we filling, because of sort of the language in what we had done in the... because of sort of the language and what we had done in the past seemed odd. And she dug into it and came back and said, "It looks like we've been doing it wrong, and it's gone back a long ways." It really should be, there should be two board members on the lake board. And the fact that that lake is all an Independence Township means it's two people from this board. So I just want to thank her for, you know, being thorough and looking at that. Then once that happened, then I went and talked to the supervisor with the idea that really I probably shouldn't even be on it from a transparency standpoint. Historically, I'm not the first treasurer who's lived on that lake who was on the lake board either. Because John Lutz was the treasurer way back when, and he lives on that lake. So there's been some history of that happening. But I think the best solution is what he's doing here, which is to put me on Lake Oakland and have Terry go to Walters Lake. So, but again, I want to thank the clerk, because without her, you know, doing her job to look into that, we might not have caught this, so. Thanks, Clerk Newback.
Okay. Any other, yes?
I don't know how Walters Lake works, but Lake Oakland, we're almost done for the season. So I don't know if we can make this take effect 2026. I think we literally have one more meeting in October, but I'll do whatever you would like. But it would just be my thought, like, to just finish up this year with everything we've already been approving on that lake and these water studies and all the stuff we've approved in the budget. But I, I'm happy to do it either way, but it's just a suggestion, because we're literally almost done for the year.
Is there anything on Walters Lake that's coming up for?
We still have a meeting coming up, yeah.
Anything on the agenda that could look bad if you voted yes for or no for?
No.
No? Okay.
Trustee Tetter has a comment.
Oh, sorry.
Could we make all of the other appointments immediate and allow trustee Nalamothu to finish her term? Sounds like you'd like to stay on for that last meeting.
She could be on both.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. She could, we could do, we could do Walters Lake effective immediately. And then allow, and then you would assume that role in 2026.
Great idea.
Oh, thank you. Yep, sounds good.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Just Terry, if you'll let me know, I'll attend the Lake Oakland meeting, just as a member of the public, so that I, so we can have a speaking.
Or, any questions or comments from the audience? Questions or comments from online? No? All right. And let's make motion C, the one adding Clerk Newback to Walters Lake. If we can just add that.
Okay.
All right, so can I get the motions, please?
Give it a shot. Move to appoint trustee Nalamothu to Walters Lake board with a term to expire with her term on the Charter Township of Independence Board of Trustees effective immediately.
Second.
All those in favor? I'm sorry, isn't this a roll call? You have to do a roll call.
Clerk Newback, yes. Treasurer Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Hayward?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Nalamothu?
Yes.
Trustee Tetter?
Yes.
And Supervisor File?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay.
I'll move to appoint Treasurer Brown to the Lake Oakland Improvement Board with a term to expire with his term on the Charter Township Board of Trustees effective January 1, 2026.
Support.
Should you, sorry, announce when it will expire?
He did.
He did.
I'm sorry, okay.
Roll call, please.
Treasurer Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Hayward?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Nalamothu?
Yes.
Trustee Tetter?
Yes.
Supervisor File?
Yes.
Clerk Newback, yes. Motion carried.
Okay, then I will make a motion to appoint Clerk Newback to Walters Lake Improvement Board with a term expiring with her term on the Charter Township of Independence Board of Trustees.
Second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Hayward?
Yes.
Trustee Morocco?
Yes.
Trustee Nalamothu?
Yes.
Trustee Tetter?
Yes.
Supervisor File?
Yes.
Clerk Newback, yes. Treasurer Brown?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion carried, all right. Regular business, 5. Request to approve the 2025 tax rate request based on Form L 4029 and adopt 2025 millage rates for the 2026 budget year. To go through that, we have our assessor, Greg Bab.
Good evening, everybody. So I'm here to approve the 2025 tax rate request for the 2025 millage rates. As you know, this is what we're going to be able to have the treasurer approve and levy the millage for the December tax bills. For those of you who have not seen the form before, we'll just go over it really quickly. There are four categories: the operating millage, the fire operating millage, police operating in the safety path. Column four on the form, this is the voted potential millages that the public voted on, and this is the maximum that they allowed, voted five. So you can't get more than what was approved last year. So column five is what was the maximum allowable last year. And then the headley amendment, that says that we can't levy any more than what the rate of inflation was. So if the rate of inflation is higher than the increase in the taxable value, the headley rollback fraction rolls the millages back, so we can't get more than what we were allowed to last year. So this year, it's the 9913. So all of the allowed millages from last year, the permanently reduced last year, by the, multiplied by the current millage rate fraction, gives you the maximum allowable millage rates for this year. The only unique thing this year is that Supervisor File wanted to reduce the millage, or the levy for the general operating millage, so we didn't levy anything more than what we did last year. So the reason that column nine and column 11 are different in real one for the operating millage, that we could have levied maximally 0.9313, it's going to be the 0.8806, which means that we won't be levying any more in taxes for the general operating fund than we did last year. But everything else is the maximum allowable.
Okay. Before we get into the operating expenses, anybody have questions on the board? Yes, trustee Morocco.
Not an expert in this by no means, but I like what I've heard so far. If I understand, that we're not maxing out our taxes that we could legally for our regular operating budget of the township. The, you know, the millages are preset. So to understand this correctly, and maybe give you kudos for it, that you are proposing that we don't... In the past, have we always maxed out the operating budget? So is this going to be the first time that we haven't taken advantage of the residents to the maximum we're allowed at the end of the year? So that's kind of a big deal.
That's a big deal, yes.
It could be, you know, hard to understand if you're not paying attention, so that's, thank you for that. And that was actually going to be, if you didn't say that, that was going to be my question is, do we need to, and, you know, and at which point do we have enough excess and enough savings and investments that we don't need to constantly leverage the maximum to the residents? And I wasn't part of any of the discussion, so I'm not sure how, you must have done the math and you must have concurred that we're not going to be hurt by not charging the maximum allowed. So I think that's a great thing, that if we can start not charging as much because we're efficient or we have a lot of savings. It doesn't do us any good to have a lot of savings and keep paying taxes and just keep saving. So I'm definitely happy that that's the way that we're starting to think and that we're not just maxing out to max out to save, just to bank more money for no reason, so. Thank you for that.
So let me answer or clarify a couple of things. Yes, we went through, and as everybody probably knows, I keep on talking about reducing costs and everything else. We, with the 2026 budget, which I'll be coming to the board here in the next couple of weeks to go through and work our way through all that, you will find that there was just shy, I think of like $13,000, shy of a million dollar savings from 25 operating expenses to 26 operating expenses. So definitely cut the expenses substantially. We should not see any difference in impact on things. So like you, Sam, I don't believe that, I don't like personally philosophically, the government collecting and sitting on our money. Okay, I think that we as taxpayers could find much better uses for the money than the government can just sitting on it. So in this case, when we were looking at it, there are some things with the fire and police, the safety path, I want to make sure we're clear, that does go up, because those are kind of their own little independent programs, and the funds are definitely needed in those areas. But with the operating costs and changes by consolidating building and planning and optimization there, some of the things we've done with the assessing, and some of the things that we're looking at IT and just overall budget, I've gone through with every single director, sat down and went line by line through every single one of the budget items, and got them to go through and take a look and say, "Okay, what do we really need, what we don't need?" So again, through that whole exercise, it resulted in about a million dollars in savings. So that's why we went back through and did not increase the taxes for next year on the operating expenses. We don't need it, we have the funds. And truth be told, we're still going to have a surplus of revenue compared to the operating expenses, so there's definitely a cushion in there. And I think for this year, I think that's a pretty big step, considering that really hasn't happened. So let's take that step first, see how things go, then we might have to adjust. And if we can, then next year maybe we will look at reducing it, instead of not just increasing it. The thing I do want to make sure, and it was clear, and I think, Sam, you asked this question, just because we don't levy the max this year, is it going to impact us from what we can levy next year? The answer is no. The, what the county comes back and says, "Here's the maximum you can levy." Next year when we do the calculations, it's going to be back based off the maximum you can levy, not what you actually levy. Now, we can't suddenly go back and change our mind next year and say, "Oh, we made a mistake, let's, let's get the money we didn't take in 2006 and get it in 2008," or '07, we can't do that. So that money's gone, but that does not impact the rate that we can go through and be able to do in subsequent years going forward. Okay? Treasurer Brown?
Just the component, as Chuck was talking to me about this, to back into the number, and Chuck, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Supervisor. We try to figure out if you, if you, if you have a home you've lived in, your taxable value's going to go up, but the goal is to reduce this, so the operating tax you pay is exactly the same as what you paid the year before, even though your taxable value increased. So that was part of the figure, correct?
Yes.
To figure that out, so we can't do it for everything, but on the operating piece, if you went and looked at the detail, you're going to pay, if not exactly, super close to what you paid the year before relative to the general fund. So that was, I just want to share that from a tax.
Right, so from a cash flow standpoint from the taxpayers, they should be looking at, I mean, we all just pay taxes, right? So I mean, they were due yesterday, so hopefully everybody paid. You should see that next year, that number should be, you know, there's rounding and all that kind of stuff. But I mean, it should be right there in that same ballpark.
One last thing, for clarification. And our operating budget is about 20% of the taxes collected, is that, is that close? Or is it more or less?
I don't think it's, yeah, I don't think it's quite 20%.
So you have to differentiate between police and fire.
Yeah, taking all that out.
Of the total taxes, the township gets about 23% of it. Of the 23%, 80% of that is police and fire. So the general, it's a small, the general fund is a small number.
It's a start.
We already know we can't, we can't do this with police right now.
I was kind of trying to get to that.
It's a start. It's, it's, it's a start, I'm trying to do the right thing, so.
Right, you know, we're, again, we're just trying to turn that tanker, and you're not going to be able to turn it overnight, but this is the first step in order to be able to do something like that.
And if I might just clarify one thing, is that, so when you say that, when you're looking at the taxes you pay next year, they should be what you paid this year, that's not exactly true. It's just relative to the operating, or the general operating fund.
Yes, operate.
Everybody's taxes will go up, the rate of inflation next year, which at this point, we're looking at probably 2.67% next year. It was 3.1 this year, then it was 5% the two years before. So everybody's taxes will go up, but just what you're paying relative to the general operating fund will be similar to, or similar to the same of what you paid this year, not overall taxes. So I don't want everybody getting the taxable next year, saying, "Wait a second."
It's like 20% of 20%.
Yeah, because again...
That we're modifying.
Yes, because of the fact that the fire, police.
Pennies make dollars.
They do. They do. Every opportunity we can give to save money, I think it's a good thing. Okay. Any other questions from the board? No? Okay. Any questions from the audience? Comments? No? Okay. Any questions from online? No? Okay, then I'm going to close comments for this. And I forgot, what is this one? This one is, is a simple majority?
Need to make a motion.
Okay, so can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve the 2025 tax rate request, L-4029, and adopt the Charter Township of Independence 2025 millage rate for the 2026 budget year as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, thank you. Closed session, budget session, study session, there aren't any communication, future agenda items. Report, Fire Department, July 2025. Report from Building Department, August 2025. Oka County Sheriff's Office, August 2025. Residential Open Space Advisory Committee, July 9, 2025. Any board member comments? Boarding comments?
I did.
You do?
I wanted to, trying to find out when the fire department opened house, as we didn't mention that, and I know it's coming up soon, it's on my calendar, I'm just trying to find the day.
When is that?
September 27th.
Thank you, September 27th.
Next Saturday.
Yeah.
Great event. Been to it. Good for the kids, food trucks, good time.
They burned something down?
They do.
That's kind of cool to watch.
They burned stuff down, put it out, hopefully.
Any other comments?
And this weekend is the Village Art in the Village in downtown Clarkston.
Okay.
So another good event that they put on.
And don't you have an event this weekend?
I do, the Preservation Clarkston Gala is sold out, thanks to everybody. So that's Saturday also, at the Brady Lodge, so.
Excellent. Any other comments? No? Okay. Any from the audience? No? Okay. Any online? No? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Support.
All, support, all right. Who else said aye?